Call the meeting to order if you'll all join me in a moment of silent prayer and reflection. Terry, if you'll call the roll, please.
Pat Rooney?
Here.
Pat Cox?
Here.
Nicole Cohen?
Here.
John Mastin?
Here.
Please stand and join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to review and accept the agenda.
Make the motion to review and accept the agenda.
Very good.
Pat Cox?
Yes.
Nicole Cohen?
Yes.
Pat Rooney?
Yes.
John Mastin?
Yes. Review the proposed October 23, 2018, ordering agenda superintendent's side.
Thank you, Mr. Mastin, members of the board. We do have our agenda for the meeting. If you'll note that the recognition of visiters, we will be recognizing the Havassee 95 Speedway while we...
Your audio sounds weird. Sorry.
What is the volume?
You're tinnie.
Yeah.
It's too tinnie.
Try again.
Okay. Is that better? No? Now you can't hear? Or is it the same?
I can.
Still tinnie? I certainly could turn it off.
Test. Better?
Pass out cotton balls for your ears.
Sounds better.
That's good. That's better? Okay. All right. So, the recognition for the Havassee 95 Speedway, I think for the most part, people don't realize that they completely donated their facility for that evening as well as made several thousand dollars' worth of improvements to the facility for us to all graduation. And so, we wanted to recognize them at a public board meeting with a thank you plaque from the board. So, we're going to do that in the Sunday meeting. We also have a review of our Crane Digital Curriculum Platform and the purpose of that. And actually, Mr. Gardner will be out of town, and so, I will be doing that with assistance from two of our teachers in the district. And we'll actually do an overview and then the actual live walkthrough so you can see the system live. On the consent agenda, starting with the first item is our minutes. We have minutes from four of our recent meetings, our regular session, special session, executive session, and work sessions in September. entertain any questions on the minutes?
I just have a question on the bond hearing. It's listed on my...
The bond hearing?
Yeah, on the 1.5.
That's the annual hearing that we hold as per statute.
Okay.
September and October. We have to hold it.
Gotcha.
Did I miss that?
It's open till October.
Oh, I did. I skipped over that. Thank you.
That's okay.
Yes.
It's new. A new requirement.
Mr. Murray will be doing a presentation on the bond. Any questions on minutes? All right. Number 4.1.3 is the personnel report. If you don't have anything that is out of the ordinary in our personnel report. 4.1.4 are our gifts and donations. 4.1.5 are our travel requests. We do have several travel requests in this particular agenda. First one is National Honor Society and STUCO going to the NASSP Leadership Conference that is in Washington DC in January and February of 19. They will miss two days of school, approximately 20 students will attend. Second one is the National Honor Society. This is the Disney Leadership Conference. This is a second opportunity of the same conference that students attended earlier in the year. Those 40 students would not have the opportunity to attend again. This would allow another 40 students to attend. The third one is for Starline Elementary, the gifted classrooms. We'd be attending the artifact exhibition and discovery museum in Las Vegas. This is a one-day trip for November. Number four is the Student Council Grad Night Celebration Event, which would be in May of, it should say 2019, not 2018 on that. Sorry, I just caught that. And then finally, number five is the request for approval on the Educational Tour Group Trip for 2020. This one would be from Norway, Denmark, Sweden, Finland, and Estonia. Any questions or information that the board would like on these?
Did we send students to the National Honor Society and Student Council Trip last year?
I believe so, but I'm sorry, I don't know for sure. I can find that out.
I'd like to know that. They're missing two days of school, and they're not using district transportation, and it's $1,000 per student. So, if this is something we would regularly do, I'd like to know.
I believe it is.
Is it?
I believe as long as we've done it every year.
No.
No?
They've gone in the past.
Oh.
But it's not every year. It's not every year.
Gotcha. Well, they've gone to Disneyland every year for something.
Correct. The leadership conference, they do annually.
Right. I look at this Disneyland.
Yes. Because it's been in Chicago before, so it rotates. But I don't think they go annually.
I have an answer for you, sir. I don't... 4.1.6 is the approval of a new job description for a maintenance specialist. This is actually not a new position, but a reclassification of a current position. When we did our salary study, we discovered that we don't have some comparable positions. And one of the areas is that all of our maintenance people are considered FSPs even though their duties are not the same. And so, this job description is for the district person who actually works with all of the different schools, who actually works with FSPs, who is identified also as an FSP. It changes the job description to match the actual position and job that we have. One of the other areas that came forward, just for the board's information, is all of our, for example, all of our staff in the business office are all considered administrative assistants, even though an administrative assistant at a school and an administrative assistant that's doing accounting probably not interchangeable. And so, that's another area that, as an example of some other positions that we will be looking at that came out of the salary study that we did this last year. And that is the consent calendar. Moving into the action items, action item 6.1 is the discussion and possible action for the board to take on changes in the ASBA bylaws and their core belief statement. And so, the idea would be that the board could discuss and consider directing the superintendent to vote as decided by the board. The two areas for consideration, and this information was emailed out. Proposal A is looking at the actual core belief statement that ASBA has, their vision, mission, functions, and core beliefs. They would like to add a statement about equity to the core belief statement. And then, the second item, which is B, actually changes the bylaw that identifies how a bylaw may be amended. And so, what they want to do is change it from a majority, excuse me, a vote of 2/3 of the member boards to a majority of all of the member boards. And so, that is the proposed change. Is that on what item did you say that was on? That is 6.1. There it is. Item 6.2 is the approval of the qualified evaluators for the year. This would be allowing the persons on this list to conduct staff evaluations. 6.3 are the annual performance pay cycles. We also refer to these as the 301 goals for each of our schools. The goals have to cover four components. Those include student achievement, professional development, parent communication and involvement, and how the goals fit the district mission and vision. As a summary of the goals, three of our elementary schools have chosen math as their specific areas of focus. Two have chosen language arts, and one has chosen both. We have also added a PE goal to all of our schools since we have PE at each school now. And then, whichever the school has at the first semester, so either art or music, is going to be in the school's goal. Three have art, three have music. Secondary sites have focused their goals around content-specific academic vocabulary. That way, they can address every single department in the school as opposed to testing, which does the language arts and mathematics. Following are all of the school site plans, if you have any questions or comments.
Can I ask a question? I noticed when I was going through here on this physical education, like in one of the schools, it says 85% of second and fifth grade students will show an increase in their pre- and post-test scores on the physical education vocabulary and knowledge tests.
Right. It's actually the same goal for every school. The PE teachers did that together. Just the testing every single grade level and doing the pre- and post-test and actually using, they're going to be using Galileo, a formalized test. So, they determined to do second grade as the primary representation and fifth grade as the upper grade representation to measure for 301. Is the question that they would be doing that with all grade levels or...
No, I just wondered. I mean, it's physical education. As I looked at it, I thought, a vocabulary test? It seems to me like you have a pretest and a posttest on the physical side of it because it is physical education.
That's subjective.
Well, I know it is, but you could set that up and, you know, but anyway, I'm not debating that.
All right.
I'm just wondering about that because as soon as I saw this, I thought the idea, you know, the big push has been get these kids back physically fit. And so, it would seem to me that you'd want, if that's the role of physical education, I wouldn't have a problem with a written test, you know, certain things. But it seems to me, but maybe I'm old-fashioned in that, hey.
No more chin-ups and pull-ups and hold.
Yeah. In other words, the big discussion is nowadays in America on the condition of our kids. It would seem to me that what you ought to be looking at is bringing some type of rigor back into the curriculum in this area and measuring them. And I know it's subjective, like it's subjective, did you say? But, you know, I mean, set up some type of a system where all kids are different, but at the same time, what is, what do they pretest at, and then what do they post-test, and what's been the improvement? I'm not...
I understand what you're saying. You're looking for, a performance test would make more sense for physical education. The same thing will be true for art and music.
Exactly.
However, those tests are also more written and knowledge-based, primarily because that's the easiest, I should say, and I don't want to sound like I'm denigrating them, but that's the easiest way to test all of our students fairly on a skill set. On the language of fitness, you know, that is important for students to understand, and I think that maybe getting some samples of the kinds of things they're testing would help alleviate any concerns.
I didn't want to throw a monkey or something at the test.
But you did.
Can I just say, so, I've spent a lot of time in elementary school PE lately, but then also at the high school. They all do physical fitness tests. And there's a piece of their grade that's related to growth. Specifically for PE, in order to really tie it to the standards, they wanted to look at what measures were going to help them as they progressed. And so, they were really looking at the language and the knowledge of sports and fitness that they needed to grow. And that's where, in order to be standards-based, because if their test was based on the standards, that's how they pulled the assessment versus running as fast as you can, is it really a standard?
And also administering this test will just take one period, whereas if you have to observe and record 30 students, it could take two to three periods to do it.
Okay. But I would have thought during, and I know they do this in the PE classes because, you know, they are going to give a grade, but you wouldn't have to do it at one time. That's why I brought it up. I guess I believe that kids, you know, should be physically fit and that when they get into a PE class, it should be rigorous. They should have an idea, they started here and they finished here, and what's been the progress and stuff like that. And I know they do that within the classes. But I was just wondering, like I said, taking a written test in PE, things would change.
Yes, they have. Any other questions on the plans?
Can you just explain what the academic vocabulary is, the tier one, two, and three, just for those that aren't familiar? Because I certainly wasn't until I looked it up.
Which part are you looking at?
They're in every, they're in every school's focusing on the academic vocabulary. I don't...
Yeah. It's the vocabulary or the language of the subject. And so, a really simple example would be to subtract instead of minus or, it's using the actual terminology is the academic vocabulary. So, those are the kinds of things that you would see on an assessment. It might ask you to find a derivative of something where teachers would simplify the vocabulary, and then when students come across the word derivative, they don't know what that means. Does that help?
Well, I read about tier one, two, and three words, and they cross contents, and there seems to be a huge focus in every school on academic vocabulary. So, maybe I was the only one who didn't, wasn't familiar with that.
Anybody want to add to that, the academic vocabulary definition?
And then, I noticed a lot of problem-solving and solution standards, which I think is fine once there's a knowledge base, but that's always been a concern in our standards in the common core that I have with the younger grades because...
And typically, I won't speak for every plan, every plan actually has something different that they've addressed, and part of that is based on their results from their students. Where do they see weaknesses? And so, they try to identify areas of weakness so that they can ensure that students are growing in that foundation. And that's where, each of the plans are different because they get together as a staff and look at their data to determine that.
High school standards, parent communication involvement. You're requiring a certain minimum amount of phone calls. Why is that necessary? Why wouldn't we say that we can identify through grades whether students academically in trouble, and that would be a reason for the teacher conference?
I think the main idea is that we hear many times that parents, they never get phone calls. And so, one of the ways that helps students feel comfortable making phone calls is to actually make a few, and pretty soon you learn that it's not a problem to make a phone call to a parent.
Right. Right. I just look at, I look at that being the minimum, and I guess my concern is I don't want to see a student underserved by a teacher who's looking at a minimum set of goals as opposed to a student that might actually need help. I mean, if I'm supposed to make five calls or confirm contacts through email, turn by five parents regarding to students that they're concerned about are in danger of failing, I guess my concern is, is what happens if somebody's being minimalistic and student number says? I'm not saying that that happens, but when you set a number to it, I don't know that that really does what it's intended to do, just above.
I could be wrong, but I think it's required somewhere along the line and under the guise of accountability, all the surveys, I don't remember if it was tied to the original A3F or the current A3F, but there was a requirement for parent communication.
Well, and it's one thing to send a blanket email to all my Ds and Fs and say, hey, I'm meeting my apartment. It's another thing to pick up the phone. And as a high school teacher, I can tell you, there's not a lot of times where you get parents and it's like, oh, my gosh, thank you for calling me, because it doesn't happen all the time.
But it's neither word here. They don't have to make the phone call.
But it's different when it's, I'm concerned about your child specifically and not a blanket set of generic, here's my Ds and Fs, I'm shooting it out versus this is a specific email to you, which is the intention of this.
And one of the phone calls that will be made, which means so much to parents, is have a poll, they'll get a phone call and say, you won't believe the wonderful thing your child did today. Do parents really feel good about that?
And I think it's five calls or contacts and then 10 positive calls or contacts. It's not a call, but could also be an email.
I'm not worried about putting a minimum on the positive. It's when that child is in trouble. I don't want, my concern is, and I'm not saying that we have a lot of teachers doing it, there may be that one or two that we bring in that sit there and say, gosh, you know, let's check the box.
I like the comment. I think unfortunately, when you're dealing with goals, we have to quantify it and be able to look at that piece, and that does do that. I don't think there was ever the intent that this was to just be focusing on the minimal requirement piece, but just the fact that they had to put a number there to be able to collect the data to show that accountability, did they achieve the goal or not? But when it comes to students, you know, looking at students who are at risk, I mean, they are accountable and they should be addressing all their students.
But wouldn't the classroom data determine a minimum number of contacts to be made? I mean, we're putting together a grade book and we're saying, you know, in the first quarter of the year, the first half of semester, if you will, that we're going to, you know, raise a flag there and say, this student may be in trouble, we want to talk to you. Wouldn't the actual grade book set the minimum number based on, say, a G or an F criteria?
When you're looking at a goal for your entire staff to kind of look at that piece, and each class is different, you know, you've got your high-risk classes, you know, looking at that piece, you've got your honors classes, so you're not going to have necessarily that piece, but we're trying to look at the fact that there's the equity among all staff that they're at least doing that piece of accountability. But again, you're going to have greater needs in one class versus another based on the population that you may have.
And that's where I get the...
And it's hard to quantify that for a goal and accountability-wise to do that. I do know that the guidance couns, counselors, some counselors at the high school and even the middle school, they do look at, they pull those Ds and Fs, and at the elementary, they did the same thing for retention. So, there's systems in place to look at our at-risk students and looking at that piece. So, there are things happening outside for that concern that you're having. What are we doing? What are we, how are we addressing these at-risk kids? And there's a lot happening at the high school from an intervention perspective and even at the middle school when they're having to make those decisions, have those conversations with parents that are at risk.
Just as an aside, and this is the minimum that get documented, and actually, we have our principals who collect those things and looking at them, teachers are, got pages and pages of documented phone calls. This is, even though it is identified as a minimum, they're exceeding it, that this is the minimum to meet that target. And it may or may not be an appropriate number. When we think about a classroom of 30 and when you have five of those a day, so at the minimum 150 students, this is a very minimal number.
Ever ask a question you don't know the answer to?
Any other questions? Item 6.4 is the administrative performance pay plan criteria. This was identified in 2012 as an alternative procedure for SB 1273. And in this particular procedure, an amount of 20,000 is distributed between principal, assistant principals, directors, and superintendent for meeting the requirements as follows. It's academic gain, parent satisfaction, professional development, and teacher satisfaction. And so, that information is on the next page, Exhibit A, what the criteria is for the administrators. So, number one is the academic game based on their 301. So, our target is that they meet their goals, and our intent is to support them. Parental satisfaction, this is the survey that each principal does at their schools each year. Teacher satisfaction is a district survey that will come out for all of our teachers. And then, professional development is, our role is that teachers observe in each other's classrooms at least once during the year. Questions on that?
Do we have a copy of the surveys for 17 and 18?
Of the parent survey? Or of the teacher?
Well, no, of the teacher satisfaction survey.
Do we have a copy of it? That information was included in one of the personnel reports, wasn't it? No?
That was an exit interview survey.
That was the exit interview.
Yeah.
So, no, we haven't. That is a goal that we did not meet this year.
Okay.
And the reason that we did not need it was the participation rate.
I have a question about the teacher satisfaction section. It says 85% of the teachers in the district, I take it, I mean, will complete the Needs Assessment Leadership Survey. Is that correct?
Comprehensive Needs Assessment, the CNA.
But that's 80% of the teachers in the district. And then, the next sentence says, as a district, 80% of the leadership questions will be scored with an indicator of agree or strongly agree. So, that is, say, at one school, possibly the score would be brought down enough that 80% did not, then all of the administrators would be negatively affected by that? And you agree to that?
Yep. One of the comprehensive needs assessment was, the first year was last year, that deadly meeting that we had with all of the informations. The questions were very awkward on that survey, and so, they have been revised this year. And while they won't count for our, because our site principals have no influence, we are adding district-level questions for the teachers as well this year. So, we want that feedback.
And the leadership questions will then not be just pertaining to the leadership at a particular school, but the questions will pertain to all administrators in the district?
So, we have some that are school-based, and then we have some that are district-based.
Okay. In the same survey?
In the same survey. And just to be clear, the teacher satisfaction survey covers a whole lot of areas. There's about 10 questions that are specific to the school leadership, and then there's the additional ones now that are district leadership. Those are the ones that are utilized for this particular survey, because there are some things in there that the site leadership may or may not have control over that are included in the survey.
So, under this, under academic gains, under the first bullet point, it shows 80% of school sites will show academic gains as measured using pre-assessment data aligned with the 301, I'm sorry, pre-post, sorry, assessments, assessment data aligned with the 301 site-based goal. So, we could have two schools not show any measure of growth?
No. This really refers to their 301 plan. So, we could have schools that don't meet their 301 plan goal, which doesn't mean they haven't made growth, but they went ahead with their goal.
And what is our assessment data that we're using on that?
It is the 301 plan itself.
301 plan itself.
And most of that's based on the Galileo?
In most cases, it's their other, whatever their criteria, they've identified them here. So, for high school, it's, as you saw, was the vocabulary and all... For high school, it's, as you saw, was vocabulary and all of the different courses, I think vocabulary, and some of the elementars have now some language. So whatever their site goal is, if they as a site meet it, then that, then we also get some responsibility and reward for that, so, for the support. Does that answer your question? We're not talking just general AZ merit results, we're talking their specific site plan.
Right, and I understand that. I didn't understand that it was linked to the specific goals in Site 301.
Any other questions? All right, the next sections are our newest policy advisories. You'll note that there are over 60 pages of policy here. I'm going to go through and highlight very quickly certain areas. First ones on, again, the middle of the page typed numbers are, is the board member conflict of interest. I do want to point out on this one, because it is important to note that in the second paragraph, or excuse me, the first paragraph under conflict of interest on page one is, it says, shall refrain from voting upon or otherwise participating in any manner as a board member in such a contract, et cetera. So the insert on this particular policy is, actually defines what is refrained from participation in. And so it further emphasizes the conflict of interest for board members here. And then we do add on page four is a conflict of interest form that one would fill out if you believe that you are disqualified from voting on an item. And then there's also a form if, if you say, you know, if somebody said, well, you have a conflict, and you're saying, no, I don't, then you have your, I have no conflict form. All right, there's some technical changes on the school board meetings, VE, which defines what a board meeting is. And then how, we've been doing this all along, but how board members vote, which we do the oral vote. And then in the minutes, starting on page nine, is that the minutes have to reflect how a board member voted. Some budget format indicators. There is on page 12 on audits. This is an area that we do expect to have some legislation proposed to amend this, but the current law now is that the district may not hire the same auditing firm for more than three consecutive years. And that if you are using that firm, you cannot also use them as a consultant. The issue for our state is that we only have a few auditing firms, and all of the schools use those because school finance is very different, so. On page 14, we start with the purchasing ethics. Again, this is an area that has resulted from the investigation down in the Phoenix area, I think it was Scottsdale, that their business manager went to jail. So this one talks about if you are, in the first part of it, a person who participates in securing contracts, that you cannot accept or agree to accept any gift or benefit with a value of anything. If it's more than $300 value, it is considered a felony, a classed felony, and if it's less than $300, it is a class one misdemeanor. In the second paragraph, it talks about if you are a vendor and you agree to give somebody a gift or benefit in excess of 300 or less than 300, it's either a felony or a misdemeanor. And so there are some obvious things, but this also is going to affect even down to the school site level some of the work that's done. They do note, and this was already in our policy, but on page 15, it talks about that a gift or benefit does not include food, it does not include nominal value like teacher pens, busts. School property disposition is just a couple of technical changes, same thing with retirement of facilities. On the next one, which is the evaluation of professional staff members, there is some inserted language on page 21, that we may adopt policies for expedited performance reviews of teachers who have been exemplary for at least three consecutive evaluations. And I know that that one, it's one of the areas Ms. Vestadegel and her team will be working on is providing some information and proposing some evaluation changes. There's also some information about inadequate classroom performance, and we do have a procedure that is highlighted, and that is our district procedure. Promotion and retention of students, this addresses the move-on when reading for third grade. There's some technical changes here, and there's also some language about how a student can be promoted if they are not performing proficient on a third grade reading. Evaluation of instructional programs, this is new, we will comply with this this year, but in grade six through eight, if a student has not performed proficient on their grade level mathematics assessment, the statewide assessment, then we have to provide the parents' notice via email. Page 32, we're adding information about what the district may post, since apparently it has been challenged. So this identifies some specific documents that may be posted.
So how are we going to address this IKRB on page 26 for the statewide assessment when it's ever-changing and we're looking at a menu?
That was one of the interesting things, because they've changed from a state required to the statewide assessment.
Right.
And we don't really know how that's going to play out. As far as the menu of assessments, districts will still have to select an assessment as their statewide, as their assessment, district assessment for the statewide assessment system. And so I'm anticipating that there will be another change in this policy here as soon as that is defined. The last year of AZ merit is this 1819 school year, and so from that point forward, there will be an assessment selected-
Right.
-by districts.
Right, which means the chances of scores going back down again because there's been a change.
And then the other idea would be, how do we compare the scores for districts that are taking different assessments? Will there be some sort of a metric applied to, like they do with an ACT and the SAT? They say if you score this on the ACT, it's approximately this on the SAT. And so whether they'll develop some sort of a-
I can give input on that. This summer when I was down with AZ merit, they're actually not discontinuing AZ merit?
It has not been voted on.
Yeah, okay.
They haven't approved the contract.
Okay. They're continuing AZ merit. The state test will be AZ merit. Schools will have the option to adopt or use other options that they have posted, the ACTs and whatnot. They will be required to pay for those tests and have the data then conform to what the state needs, is what the ADE told us this summer when we were working on the test.
Part of the issue is that the, so far, that they've extended the AZ merit, but they haven't renewed the AZ merit. And so my understanding, and it's interesting because we're hearing different things, is that the AZ merit can apply to be one of the assessments, but what hasn't been determined is whether the state will reimburse you for whatever test you choose, or even charge, you know, set an amount for the AZ merit as well. Because the state does have to-
The state said that they were conforming and keeping AZ merit, and anything else would be picked up if the district chose, or that school chose.
So that's interesting, because the State Board of Education hasn't voted on that yet.
Well, they actually voted not to renew it.
Right.
They actually voted not to renew it. So I'm not sure who in the ADE told you that, but the State Board is the one who makes the policy over the assessment, and they voted not to renew the AZ merit contract. It's, so-
And I think they voted to extend it, but not to renew it.
But not to renew it.
And so that was just to get us through that menu of assessments time. If you guys were told that by ADE, that may be what they plan to propose to the State Board?
But then it would still have to be voted on.
It would still have to be voted on. We are pretty much up in the air at this point with what's happening with assessments, because even though they identified the menu for the high school for this last year, they still haven't identified how they're going to provide comparisons among high schools.
It takes the comparative piece right out of it if everybody's taking a Denmark test. The whole thing is idiotic.
All right, page 34, and this is the entrance age requirements, and talks about full-day Moving into the JICK, start on page 37, there is some language added to clarify this was violence, harassment, intimidation, and bullying. They've changed it to student bullying, harassment, and intimidation. Took the liberty of adding our mission tagline here, because it fits very well with this particular policy. And you'll just note that there have been language added to it, explaining the addition to bullying with harassment and intimidation. That's true for the next several pages.
One thing that I see, that I think was left out that's important, and I know we have it in some of our handbooks for students, is to include under prohibitions and discipline on page 38 is students are prohibited from bullying, harassment, or intimidation on school grounds, school property, so forth, and on the way to and from school. And I believe that's even in state law unless it was removed by the legislature. That I found to be very important as a principal, because I could, I had some say in working with the parent. They couldn't just say, hey, that's on my town, and I'm sorry it was left out here. I think it needs to be in there.
I would say with some of the recent case law, this, it's not only to and from school, it's at any time where it impacts school. So I'm not sure that that needs to be added. It's basically anything that impacts school is considered a school-related participative.
And principals could still include if they have on the way to-
Oh, they can, absolutely.
Okay, sure.
And we just did, that was one of the areas that was discussed at the law conference, and we just did training with our principals on our last ATM on that.
Okay, good. Would that include cyberbullying?
Yes.
All of it.
And you all can't see the policy, but it talks about, and through the use of electronic technology, communication equipment, et cetera.
Computers, networks, forums, mailing lists, forums that cover stuff like Facebook, Snapchat.
So jumping to page 46, this is our interscholastic sports, and this one talks about the policies regarding health and safety, having policies regarding health and safety, and it just rearranges some of the language from different places in the policy. But it also does talk about the guidelines now for, on the bottom of page 47, about educating our coaches, people's parents, about heat-related illness, sudden cardiac death, and prescription opioid use. Wellness, we revisited again with adding the recess information. On page 54, we start with the immunization of students. These are the technical changes to the immunization rules.
What are competitive foods on page 50? Are those different, different things that are fed to different vendors?
Probably competitive with our food service.
Oh, okay. Competitive foods?
Right, right. It's things that compete with food services, yes.
Okay, I see. And then what about the snack bar at football games run by the booster club? Is that included?
No, this is during the academic instructional day when students are required to be-
Okay. I looked for that, but I didn't notice it.
On page 59, we have our administrative medicines to students. There's some slight change in the language there for the epinephrine. I skipped. And that's it? Any questions there?
How are we handling the epinephrine issue? Because I know that's gotten quite expensive.
I'm going to actually ask Ivy to answer.
And districts have the option to provide that. It's not an obligation. There was a time it was, and then they did change the law, where it's an option for that piece. At this time, we do have students who do have epinephrine prescriptions, and we do have those in the schools. The district at this time has not procured them. We have gone through researching agencies that can make it available. You still have to go through the process of procuring a prescription to get that. And after two and a half years, I was able to get that through the county, so we have that capacity to do that. And then they came out and changed the law where it wasn't required for us to do that. And they had not provided any funding for that, to that whole entire time that they had the law in place, so we had not taken action to make it happen. Because we wanted it to be sustainable. But we do actually provide training for all of our school health offices on a yearly basis on the injectors. So we do that training annually for staff, but because we do have that available at the sites for those who need it.
So, but the district itself does not have an EBBPAN?
Correct.
System?
How much does an EBBPAN cost?
600, isn't it?
And say, the last time, you have to have a pack of two, they were at 607 dollars. There are some agencies that were willing to, through donations, you go, there was no guarantee that those programs would be sustained. And if you can't draw any prescription, they do expire.
Oh, that's right.
And then they have to be kept in refrigeration, and they have to be accessible, so some of those other challenges that happen over the summer, some things like that.
Or EBBPAN's typically covered on the parents', the parents' medical insurance?
If a child has a severe allergy that requires it generally, and they are covered generally under medicated child access eligible.
Any other questions on the policies that are in the big batch, which are mostly technical changes? Okay, item 6.6, this is the final homework club, Nautilus.
They're all in now.
Now we'll have all of ours there. 6.7, this one is a discussion and possible action. This one is regarding the expansion of the Lake Havasu Classical Academy at Ora Grande, and the recommendation is that the board consider approving the expansion from K2 next year, which is what it would have moved to, to K6 for 1920. I would like to share a little bit on the rationale. We did begin this program with the kindergarten and first grade, and with the intention of expanding it one grade level per year. We did have several parents who did not choose to bring their children because they didn't have it for their mid elementary grade to upper elementary grade students. We also have been doing a lot of investigating and training around classical curriculums. And I was looking personally at Temecula Valley Prep, which is the one I'm familiar with. I know we looked at a few others, but they have identified that it really does make sense to go ahead and start them K6, even though the students haven't built all of the foundation, because you can now bring the staff together for training, for curriculum development, for all the things that help to bond that staff and make it successful. And so we have had some requests from families as well, and so one of the things that we would like to do is have the board approval to begin researching what it would actually cost us to do that for the next school year. Any questions on that?
How many kids are enrolled in that?
So right now, we have 25 in the kindergarten, and it's smaller in first grade. I think it's probably less than 20, right under 20, Ora Grande is small anyway at that point. But for kindergarten, which is the first year coming in, we stopped that number at 25.
I know when I go out into the community, I hear, I hear people that have gone into the classroom and an anecdote from, from somebody I was talking to just today, was, they were, and this is a teacher's son, he grew up here, was born here, went and visited the classroom, and was just amazed at what we're doing in kindergarten, so.
It's a different approach, and it provides an option for parents. We seem to have families that want to do.
I have a question. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, don't we have a board policy about having the curriculum on display for 60 days so that- on display for 60 days so that community and staff, how do we deal with that?
So in, if we're adopting curriculum for everybody, that everybody has to do, then that becomes the core curriculum for the district, and it has to come for the board and the review and all of that. Right now with the classical, it's a magnet program, we're piloting curriculum there, so it hasn't come for a full board adoption.
And what's the last thing you said?
It hasn't come for a full board adoption at this point.
Okay. But so as far as the 60-day review requires, we don't, we can ignore that?
Right, so because we're not adopting it as the core for the district.
For the district.
So parents have an option on that. They can choose our regular core district curriculum, or they can choose the magnet, which has these things in place.
I understand that this model was actually based on Edie Hirsch's Core Knowledge, which I'm very familiar with. Is that, is that what you're understanding?
That's, yes, I mean, it's been around for a while, but that's probably the most well-known structured curriculum.
Okay.
And I know that, we've talked about Hillsdale, we also, I know, people here haven't necessarily heard this, but when we were talking at principals' meetings about it the first year, we talked about the Temecula Valley Laboratory. And almost all of those have started with that Core Knowledge Foundation, scope and sequence.
Well, when I was a teacher, a gift that I incorporated Core Knowledge in what I did, so I think that's wonderful for, it's just very difficult to, for our students to learn about so many wonderful things that are out there to learn. So I think it's great, but I have, I had thought that I had the Hillsdale, what I called, it's not, it's not a curriculum, you told me.
It's a scope and sequence.
It's a scope and sequence, and that's all that I ever had. So I, for example, when we had the English textbook adoption, I never thought of it as a curriculum. It was just a list of literature, works of literature. They didn't have grammar, didn't have things with writing. With literature, and this has nothing to do with elementary, but I'm just giving an example, my point is, I had never seen the curriculum, and I would like to see this.
So there's not a, so when we talk about curriculum, and it's funny because I have for the claim presentation some information, but the curriculum is what you determine will teach the standard. And so it doesn't necessarily have to be a textbook that has lessons in it.
No.
It can be a list of novels, it can be a primary source document from, from history. I mean, those can all be curriculum. And so for the Hillsdale, and this is particularly true for the secondary, because the Core Knowledge, they have identified resources for their curriculum and their certain texts. But in the, for the high school, what they've done is they've identified the novels that they will use to teach certain standards and skills, and then they've also identified the grammar and the writing that will be taught, but not a textbook to teach.
Okay, and I understand it doesn't have to be a textbook, but you know, my, I guess my concern is that without, but let's just talk about literature, and you can talk about literature of the fourth graders, fifth graders, to sixth graders, but I'm thinking right now of Wuthering Lives or 1984. The only control, because those novels are classic novels, they're, they're used in every high school. But without knowing what essential questions are that the teachers are going to use when they teach that book, book to these, to the students, we don't really know what point of view the teachers are teaching. They could be, you just think of 1984, look how many places you could go with that, depending upon your point of view. And we, you know, I know this board has been very careful that we have control over, over the curriculum. And so unless we knew what the essential questions were that had been developed, and of course, you can always change the essential questions if you find them in a textbook, but we, we know nothing. And I, that's just, the same with social studies. Someone can have a point of view and get that out, and this board might not want that point of view. And without that curriculum, the curriculum, to me, is that piece that says, why are we teaching this novel?
And I would respectfully disagree. I think you can take anything and come up with questions to ask about that, that it doesn't have to be identified and scripted, that we have a standard that says we need to, a student, for example, would need to read this text and identify the author's point of view, identify the context from the historical, you know.
I'm asking about the theme.
Those are things that are questions that we have.
Why is the theme, I'm talking about the theme of the novel.
Right.
I just, this board has been very cautious and wanted, has wanted to be in control since I've been on it, about what is going on in the classroom, what are we teaching the students?
And so I would like to say on the, as we're talking about the elementary right now, that one of the things that has occurred is that the, we have a K through three phonics program. And so, for example, in the Hillsdale, they recommend the Riggsby, Rigby, which we do not use, we have not adopted, we've redefined that whole section to match what we have to teach phonics, because that's the phonics curriculum. The literary selections that are selected there are primarily, and I, I don't know if we have anybody here from Carol, right, are many of the same selections that they would find in other literary selection, or texts for that age level. But there are some very specific things that are identified that are historical, certain fairy tales, certain fables, you know, those kinds of things. In the math portion of it is sing corps math. And so that's an area that, again, that's primarily the one we're piloting right now because of the fact that we have not used that before, we want to see how that works. And that would be an area, those would all come to the board should we decide to go forward with this, because now it would be a full school adoption.
Okay, so I know, I went back this weekend and reviewed what Edie Hirsch said about Core Knowledge, which he created. And he said that his, we'll call it curriculum, was designed for, to be used at about 50% of the day, and then the school could do what else it wanted to do. So I'm wondering, do we have, happen to have the kindergarten or first grade teacher from?
They weren't able to make it because our kindergarten, I mean, our first grade teacher is a mentor or.
New teacher.
So they're not able to, she wasn't able to be here because she had another obligation that had to be up.
Do you have?
First year seminar.
Okay. Do you have any idea in the course of the day, in the course of the day, especially with kindergarten, is the entire day taken up with getting this information into kids' heads? Is that pretty much how time is used?
I have an hour frame that I go into the classrooms, and so I'm in, I'm in kindergarten through fourth grade for about five to 10, sometimes 15 minutes, depending on the need. But when I go into, when I go into the first grade classroom, they are usually doing a story. I've watched them interact with a play. Today, they were studying Louis Armstrong and Ella Fitzgerald, and when I walked in, they had jazz playing. And so then the story actually was incorporating Gran, which is Granny, and she was telling them about jazz and the two little kids, and then cassette and a cassette tape went in, so I ran to the library, got an actual cassette player and a cassette tape, and brought it back to the classroom, so they had that as a visual and understanding of like what they were talking about. So they got to actually interact with those things. So they're, they're engaged in a story at that time. When I go into, and they've done, they were given social studies at one time, or history, and it was Mesopotamia, and they had, they were looking at the map was another, you know, example. Then when I go into the kindergarten class, they are usually at story time and sitting, but that transitions, transitions into snack time, and then that transitions into they go out for recess for 15, 20 minutes. And so that's, that I see story, I also see working on letters and numbers.
So I think.
But it's within that hour that I'm seeing, so, but they also go to specials, they go to all four of our specials. And I think that's a question that we have as a staff that keeps coming up as a concern, like what's our specials going to look like? How is, like, what is it all going to be, since I started talking? That's where, you'll notice you have Ora Grande staff in here, because this is something that is.
And my understanding is that those teachers will be here next week at the board meeting, so you can ask some questions.
And have they all, is the scope and sequence, has it been out there, and the teachers have looked through it and then visited the classrooms?
I personally have a copy that I've had.
I mean, is it available, all teachers?
And I've shared it with as many that would like to look at it. There is concern about what personally some would have to teach in the science aspect, in the science classroom, as a fifth grade teacher, they were concerned about what was in the vocabulary that they were going to have to discuss. So there are things that are, that, there's good, I mean, as a math teacher, I'm, you know, it's, it's math, it's very scope and sequence, so, but yeah.
Can you indicate what the, in math, I mean, did you say math?
Science. No, science, sorry. If I can find the page number, I will show.
It's on the reproductive system. It's basically sex ed. The vocabulary is all those body parts.
It's on page 106.
Anatomy.
Anatomy.
Had that in fifth and sixth grade.
Yep.
So I understand the uncomfortances.
Well, and that was the case, like, before sixth grade went to elementary, fifth grade had the video, but then sixth grade came over, and we no longer had the video, the standards had shifted to eighth and freshman. So we no longer have the conversation, the video, the discussion at the elementary level. I'm not quite sure if they do at the middle school level, but I know it's a huge topic, subject unit at the freshman level. I just know that because I had children that went through.
So my, my concern is about kindergarten, and I know in our district for a long time, I think, I think the, I think it's very exciting, but there's, is research about how important play is for children, and I don't, for kindergartners, and I don't mean going out to play at recess. I mean, having choices, working with other kids on, with puppets, or building something, having that kind of playtime, that develops their social and emotional intelligence, and it pays off later. And I, my main question, I mean, we certainly would have the flexibility to, to change the curriculum to some extent, to incorporate play, especially in kindergarten, in full day kindergarten. So I mean, that could be done, but it, but these are the, I'm pretty conservative about things like this. This is a big, this is a big, big leap for us, and while I'm very excited about it, and I like it, I just want to be sure that we're not leaving anything out. We haven't, that we, and also, the impact it's going to make on, on Ora Grande, you know, it's going to change your culture. Some teachers are going to leave, and there will be new people there, life is about change, and I understand that. But it's a, it's going to be a really, really big deal for teachers to decide, no, I want to stay, I want to do this, and this is not for me, and then you bring a few teachers in, so, but there's all that apprehension, it's just natural, you know, your school culture is going to change, and you've got those bonds with people, and it's, if, you know, if we do that, and it's, it will be a shock, it will, it will be tough if you do that.
They do know in the kindergarten class, they have a kitchen, you know, they have a little wooden kitchen that they have in there. I have, of course, when seeing them interact with it, just because of my timeframe that I'm in there, but I do know in the kindergarten class, when they have done the play that I have on video, they made their own puppets, they, you know, interacted and played their parts and moved around, so, so there's, I mean, I do know there's that kind of play and interaction that I'm taking.
I just, and I, I don't know if teachers are doing this, but I would hope this, say starting tomorrow, they will find a way to go, start going in there and observing and trying to make a decision. If, if the board passes this, I mean, I would come out and, and stay with the kids if I'm unable, while a teacher goes in there, if, if that need be.
And I think one of the priorities for, for us has been trying to get as much training for the staff as possible, and again, this was designed as a, as a magnet to bring students back to the district who would otherwise choose a different program. And there are some negative things about having a K and a one separate from the rest of the school that would be resolved by saying, you know, we're going to, we're going to create this magnet, and everybody work together to be committed to have a K6 model. And it's not a requirement that people stay for, but they would have that choice, so that would be, but I know that Mr. Briterman has been arranging site visits, he's also been working with having a speaker come out and talk more about what a classical curriculum looks like. And when we do that, we would like to open that up to any teacher who's interested in hearing about it. So there, this would be a process, but we don't even want to start the process unless the board says, yes, go ahead and explore. Because otherwise, you know, it would be like, people think, well, they're going to do this, or, or, you know, speculate on what we might be doing because we're educating. So get it out there and have conversations.
I've gotten feedback, I've gotten feedback from two, two parents that have kids in the program, but have you?
I have.
Received any feedback?
Just a couple of conversations with people who have been very happy other than that.
So you're not getting complaints from kindergarten, first grade, you're not getting complaints from the parents about they're so disappointed that their kids are in that class?
I haven't, I don't.
I mean, I remember.
No, it was an option. I mean, they went, they signed up to be in it.
I remember talking about something one day.
Talking to someone that was disappointed.
Is that where your point is? That's why we're all like.
We have a parent and a kindergartner.
Yes.
I lost my voice as soon as I talked.
Can I ask a question? I've missed a lot of school board meetings, but I've been sitting here trying to hear what a classical education is, a definition of it. Can somebody give me a paragraph of that?
Oh my gosh.
Or even a sentence.
I think it's in the, in the title. It's classic, it's timeless.
Well, there's classical music, there's classical economics, I don't know what it is in this level of education. What is it?
Basically, it's a focus on the education that was provided historically to students in America, so it focuses on more of the Western civilization philosophy of education, although it doesn't neglect the whole world as a, as an educational topic. Identified time-tested skills and classical pieces of literature, and using historical documents for history, those kinds of things. Does that help a little bit?
A little bit.
It does not. I know Mr. Rooney was telling me that his mother went to a classical high school and took Greek and Latin, is that correct?
It was a college.
It was a college, but this, we're not, we might be teaching the students Latin roots and suffixes and things, they will not be taking Greek and Latin.
Actually, Latin does come in, in the curriculum.
Right.
By third grade, you'll be in with Latin, so.
I went to a classic country school, and that sounds about like what they probably taught then, reading, writing, arithmetic.
Yeah.
And, and love of country.
Yes.
Is that close?
I hope so.
Yes.
Then I could leave with a smile.
What were you concerned about? What, what is your concern?
I was taught, when you teach, you always start with a definition, and I wasn't hearing a definition.
Okay, that's a good point. Thank you for asking that question.
Thank you for answering.
I want to share a story from today, which was, I had a student open up their science textbook, which happened to have been used possibly by the former science teacher before me, and in the very front was a sticky note, a list of words, and the first left side said Latin, and the second, so, I mean, I, I understand the purpose of Latin, but maybe we can explain that, because I know a lot of people don't understand why Latin, and so maybe that could be something that.
And so maybe that could be something that could be prefaced and understood. But it, I mean, I know in our content of words, I am, I mean, I understand the point, but maybe.
I can speak to that. This year, I started incorporating some Greek and Latin roots into my fifth grade classroom. Seventy percent of the English language is based on Greek and Latin roots. And so when kids get a really good understanding of that, their vocabulary just kind of explodes. They're able to make understanding of words that they otherwise may not have understood. And when we get into our testing and the content, the reading, the higher level reading, it really helps them to understand words that they have never been exposed to.
It's also a great jumping off point to other language. Spanish, as a, for instance. We generally have our American.
Medical terminology.
Absolutely. Yes.
And again, as we talk about exploring going schoolwide, part of the issue would be that, are we going to start now introducing Latin at third grade? And do we have a Latin teacher in the wings? What are the options for us? I mean, there's a lot of conversation that needs to occur and that was one of the areas that we would need to explore. It also could be that we don't start with everything for every student at every grade level, but we begin with some, maybe some foundational things. I don't know, but that's partly why we wanted to have the conversation.
But do you really need a, a Latin teacher to teach reading?
Not at that grade level. But by the time you get to middle and high school, you'd need a Latin teacher for Latin, if students continue with Latin.
Right.
And we actually do have a source. The ASU digital actually has a Latin course that we can take through, that our students can take. So if we can't find a Latin teacher, we have one in the wings at high school.
So I know Amy doesn't have a voice, but are you pleased? Is she pleased?
She is. As far as curriculum, I don't know, honestly, how much different it is, but she's reading books. But I don't know.
She's reading books?
Kindergarten's reading books.
Well, my kids were reading books in kindergarten and they were in a regular classroom. I don't think it's the classical that's getting them reading books.
She loves her teacher. They don't do a lot of play. They have the kitchen, but it's an incentive and they don't use it often.
I can, I can tell you, the parents that I have talked to are, are loving this program. You know, and as a parent with four children in the district, I wish something like this were around when, when my kids were going through. You know, there's pluses and minuses to everything in life. But for me, especially with one child who is developmentally disabled in my house, and that just drives Nicole nuts that I use that sometimes, but I, I have pretty good study of brain development in my own house. I have a, I have a child in my house that wasn't supposed to roll over, sit up, stand, walk, talk. There's a list. Who, the only thing that we've ever told her, teachers, her caregivers, her therapists, was to push it. And the reason why we did that was because we wanted to make sure that she achieved her full potential. And when I look at permission statement, which is right here on the back wall, it says, we're going to focus on scholarship, character, and humanity. And if we're going to focus on those three things, and if we as a district are going to literally move the ball, we've got a ninety percent graduation rate. Take the victory lap. What are we doing next? What are we doing to up our game? What are we trying? What are we experimenting? One of the things with leadership is to get out of the box, not be afraid to break something in the process and to move forward. What are we doing to do that? This isn't going to be perfect. It's not going to make everybody happy. We may break a couple of things in the process. We may have a learning curve to this. But what are we doing to further our mission on scholarship, character, humanity? That's the way I view this. So I think it's a good idea. I think it's a good program. And again, I wish my kids would have been involved with something like this, looking at the scope and sequence. I really think that this is a positive for our district and not a negative.
Can I get clarification on the vote then for next week? The vote next week is just to open up the ideas and look for it, is not that ideal, right?
It's not to take it.
Right. It's to, to further the investigation and bring back a, a full proposal to, to go to K six.
And at what point will we bring back that full proposal? Are we planning on doing it? Do we have a timeframe that we want to get that done?
Well, it would have to be sooner rather than later.
Sooner rather than later, yes. I'm hoping by December.
Okay. By December, maybe.
Will that involve a survey of parents in the community for the upper grades? Like how they feel about the program? Is, like, is, I'm just concerned that, is there enough interest to sustain it? Like, if we tried it for a year and then it, there wasn't enough interest?
So on, with a magnet school, the, the idea would be that every student at Ora Grande would get that program. And so if parents didn't want them to get that, then they could take them somewhere else.
It's more that they don't want it, they change.
Right. And so then the, the idea is that, and I think pretty much everybody is aware that Ora Grande is our smallest school and is, is drastically shrinking. And so we've actually added students because of this program with, when we did the community survey, they were really interested in a full program. And I go back to the comments, but I would love to put my third grader there, I'd love to put my fourth grader there, but we only were opening it in K one. So, so the idea would be that the students who are there, because it is a program that's for everybody. It's not a program for elite students. It's not a gifted program. It's, I think about, Henry Levin back in the day talked about accelerated reading and accelerated programs, because what actually, for students who are behind, you give them more challenge and more interest as opposed to dumbing things down for them. And the idea here, this is for everybody. It's, it's very high level. It's very challenging. It's very interesting. It's very rigorous. And then, and then also then attract students to Ora Grande for that program, perhaps from some of our other schools, because they're, they're particularly Starline and Jamaica are large, which would hurt them to get a little smaller. But primarily, the target would be to attract them from the private Christian schools and also the church.
The churches.
So it isn't a case-by-case selection basis? It's just if you're in the Ora Grande area, you're all.
Yes. That's what you'll get, unless you don't want to go there. And then anybody who wants to bring their students there for that program, it's open.
Until it's full.
Until it's full.
Kathy, our first grade magnet teacher just walked in. I know you had a question.
Yes.
I'm going to put you on the spot.
I wonder. Well, actually, my, I, but I was thinking of kindergarten, but in first grade, it applies as well. I'm concerned about, you know, we're not here to pour knowledge into kids' heads and there's a lot of knowledge. And the, the day starts at eight and it's over at 2:45 or whatever, and that's it. So are you spending most of the day giving kids this knowledge, having them learn this knowledge? Or is there time for them to play? And I don't mean recess. Time for them to, I know kindergarten in our district has always been really big on having centers. A lot of first grade classrooms have those where the kids can go work together on something, but it's play. It's, might be role-playing, it might be puppets, it might be constructing something, whatever their interest is at that moment. Is there that kind of time to do that?
So it's my opinion that there is that time embedded, that structured play.
Well, that's, that play is generally unstructured.
Sure. I'll just speak to like maybe the puppets. I know my class, we've read a fable and then we've had time to make the puppets and do the play. There's countless examples, but they have extra materials in the back. So like, my kids are constantly cutting and arranging and that's kind of like separate from the lesson, like a, a centered time. I still do the Road Runner reading, so I have kids that need more intensive reading and then I pull my kids for their own time as well. So I hope that answers your question exactly, but I see, at least in first grade, that's all I can see. But in first grade, I see that they embed a lot of those extra activities, something extra activities.
I just want to be careful. You know, we, we don't always do a really good job of keeping up with, with research. And this is, this, this concept of unstructured play seems to be, especially in kindergarten, really, really important. We make this move, I don't want to take our eye off the ball. What's really best for kids? And maybe something might be left out to give kids in kindergarten especially, time to do that. That's just where I am right now. I don't know what the kindergarten teachers in the school district think about it, but I think that most of them think play is essential in kindergarten.
I just, I, as a parent, and I don't, my little guy's in first grade, but I almost considered not putting him in kindergarten in public school because I do feel so passionately about developmentally appropriate practices in education, especially in kindergarten. And I, he had Mrs. Waller at Starline and she was just phenomenal and they did a lot of play. He's now reading, he's in Mrs. Nelson's class, but he went in, he started kindergarten and he couldn't write his name because I just didn't ever feel like, even as a teacher, setting him down and practicing those things, because I felt like there was a place for that and that was at school. But he's now reading at a mid-third grade level in first grade and he just, because he was ready and he was able to play. So I think my question would be, and I don't know a whole lot about the program, but in kindergarten, is it developmentally appropriate? I think that's what you're getting at, as far as, you know, it is very structured, at least from what I've read in the standards. I didn't read a whole lot of the kindergarten, but I did read some of, at least the Hillsdale standards, if that's what we're talking about within the scope and sequence.
And those are based on.
I think that would be a question that we would probably get from the community, at least, from my perspective.
I think it's funny that there's developmentally inappropriate standards in the Common Core and nobody was concerned about it. That we have algebraic thinking in kindergarten currently, which is totally developmentally inappropriate, but when you bring that up, people say, oh, well, we break it down and we make it, and you know what I'm saying? But now we're going to have concerns with a Hillsdale. It's just, it's stunning, because I've been fighting that developmentally inappropriate K through three standard since 2012. So.
I, yeah, but I still think of what the Common Core, at least what's the math to me, is much more, and I can't, I can't compare it because I have not seen the Hillsdale math, so I can't even speak to that. But I would, I feel like the, the Common Core is a little bit more developmentally appropriate with the, the language and the tools that they use. But yeah, I agree. I'm not a huge fan of kindergarten in that aspect.
Maybe you could share. And, and I don't know, are we going to send that out, maybe?
Yeah, I can do that.
I was going to ask if you had an electronic copy of that that I can make.
Now that it has been, released at the state level, we can send it out. When we originally were provided the information, we were told we could not share it. So, yeah.
Electronically?
Electronically. Thank you.
Because I made a lot.
The Hillsdale's.
Of Hillsdale.
And I think that with the Hillsdale's scope and sequence, at the K six, it's, it's pretty much aligned with Core Knowledge. They have a few selections they've changed and they're, you know, they don't necessarily identify the same science text or whatever, but, but the actual scope and sequence, the content is, is the same from the Core Knowledge. So, but I can send that out. I will do that tomorrow.
But it was, it was available on the electronically in the last Board of Ed.
State Board.
Right. I'll send that link.
Agenda, that link. It was available there. Because I was able to write it there and print the whole thing off.
And I get the whole getting the magnet school separate, but I know it's going to come up that you guys want to incorporate this as a district. And my concern is classical learning takes away student, student learning in cooperative groups. It's teacher-led, not student-led. And that's where my concern falls in, is when we stop allowing our teachers to run the classroom that they feel is best for their students and put us into the robotic, I'm going to stand in front of the classroom and teach you. If that's, I get the magnet and I'm fine with setting up those classrooms for parents to have that option, but to implement the classical scope and sequence puts us into the old-fashioned of learning. And there are studies that show students learn ninety percent from their peers, not their teacher. And if we take that component out, I think our students are going to be broken.
Our students are broken. Did you attend Rachel's challenge?
Um, our students are broken. Last time I checked, I had two A's. I take offense to that.
You take offense to everything, Kelly.
Well.
I'm sorry.
We have two As, Bs, and a C school. I think this school district does very well with what we're using.
Well, I don't have a lot of faith in the metrics that we're used to create, those A, B, or F metric.
Then go to college, get your degree and change those metrics.
That wasn't very wise.
I just was trying to bring up a concern in adopting it through the district. That's all I wanted.
I understand your concern. But I think there needs to be a choice, as you said, as everybody talks about. And it would be really nice if you would just talk about things specifically that you have a concern with, instead of saying, my concern is that we're going to destroy kids because they learn from their peers. Well, maybe that's part of the struggle that our kids are having, is that they don't really have a knowledge base, that they're being used for political purposes.
When was the last time you were in a classroom in this district?
I'm sorry?
When was the last time you were on a school campus in a classroom in this district?
I believe it was last week.
Where?
Is that okay?
Where? Where? Okay.
All right. Before. I'm sorry. I'm not sure when I was.
Let's, let's stop right here.
This is ridiculous.
This is, this is going sideways really quick. We need to stop just to get back on track. We are, we are not talking at this point, nor has there been discussion about taking this district wide at the board level. This is supposition. So let's, let's pull that back and let's move on.
All right. Item six point six. This is policy again. This one, you'll note, is separate from the policy mega list. This is a request to suspend our policy for two readings and adopt the revised policy IHB and then the regulation and exhibit that go along with it. There were changes that were made in October of 2017, approximately a year ago, in relation to special education law. And so.
Would you say six point six?
It's six point eight.
Six point eight. I'm sorry. I have my glasses on, which means that I didn't tip them up for the bifocal part, so I look like a sixteen. You're right. I'm sorry. It was six point eight.
You're fine.
No, don't take them off so you can see. So anyway, this particular one, primarily, there's a lot of procedural changes that are reflected in these documents. Looking through them, though, we are required to certify to ADE that this policy has been adopted by November first.
Diana, we did get an extension.
Oh, we did.
We could do a second reading. They did extend it to January second.
Oh, very good. That's news to me. So it would be up to the board after reviewing this, if you want to look at the, doing it as a first reading, if you want. So looking at this policy, there is some re-warding in the policy part. On page 104, you'll notice the red that's crossed out and the blue that's there is re-warding the same information. On page two of four and three of four, that is the same. It's just some, pretty much some re-warding and restating of information. We start to see the changes in the procedural stuff that starts on page 143. And so there are forty-three pages of regulation here that go with the special education. And again, a lot of it is just what we will do to notify parents. It does provide us some additional requirements on child find. A lot of just technical changes. The idea of making information available is repeated multiple times in this policy. There is a change in the policy and I'm going to flip through to page 14 of 43. One of the things that in the past was in policy is you can only identify certain things like how to be a medical doctor or a certified somebody or other. So what they have done is changed the language in here to qualified professional. And then what the Department of Ed will do is provide a list of qualified professionals. In some cases, that can be, excuse me. I've got to try through.
We can wait. You can take another drink.
Thank you. I was going to ask Amy to speak for me.
Oh, no, page 20 of 43, 20 of 43, Mrs. Walter, this is a new term, I, I did not see this when I was teaching. Emotional, it's called emotional disturbance. How, what, what was the change? It used to be emotional disability, so it's emotional disturbance. I'm not sure I like, like that.
Sounds a little odd.
So anyway, qualified professionals could include even our school psychologists in some cases. And the rest of them are, like I said, primarily technical changes. Identifying, for example, written consent in the timelines and that sort of thing.
When, when is the last time we had something this comprehensive, a lot to vote on?
Actually, we do usually get our entire policy coming before the board with about every two to four years. But the changes in the legislation require significant, like as Diana had shared, the changes to implement. Most of the changes, actually, I think, are favorable, with a clearer definition on written informed consent in the timelines, and allowing us actually more time to do the process more effectively, because sometimes it was very unrealistic as to, you got it that day and you get it for a holiday, Christmas break, made life a little bit challenging, versus they are making sure that we're meeting the parents, making sure they are informed of what they're requesting and signing.
There are some, some additional language on the IEP, which is on page 26 of 43. One of the areas which is interesting is that, it's not in that paragraph, but for example, if a parent can decline to have their student participate in special education, they can no longer request that that information be deleted from the student's record, if a student's been identified. So there's some interesting things. I think that may have come out of some of the student violence situations that I've heard. So this policy, again, is pretty lengthy, and then when you look at the very end of it, there is the exhibit, and that exhibit is now going to be very short.
It's like taking a half hour phone call and you should email.
The final item on the agenda is our vouchers and fines, and I know Mr. Murray has new format for the documentation, I don't know if you want to share that?
Yeah, I can just give you a little bit of the background. We're, we're still trying to fine tune some things. I'm, I'm not overly excited about how this is printing up, but just keep in mind, this is, this is backup to the actual action item, and then it also complements the voucher summary page. But with your permission, we'd like to still see if we can fine tune this a little bit more.
Keep trying.
The layout is, the layout is a little different, as you can tell.
It's clear once you find what you're looking for.
Yes.
But finding it is.
Everything is lumped together. That's, that's the problem, is we're trying to, we're trying to filter it more, in more a visually appealing way, and right now, there's no fix for that. We're on the phone pretty regularly with InTouch and with Visions, trying to find a workaround to this. Everything's, we're used to seeing it for so many years in a different type of layout, but now we're, it kind of hits you in the face when you're looking at something new. But for example, when you look at student activities for student council, everything is now lumped under student council for every school K-8, which, if you're looking at this with fresh eyes, without knowing what we used to have, it may work for a lot of people, but I, I don't know, I just, I'd like permission to continue to work on this. This may change over the next several months, and I think once you find something that works for you, if you can just say, "This looks like the best option," and we'll run with that.
Remember what I said earlier about sometimes in leadership, you have to take the risk of breaking something?
Yeah, we, we broke some things. Not, or not where it's.
It's fine.
It's inaccurate, it's just not visually appealing to me.
You're just checking to see if we're paying attention.
That's right. And just to point out too, where it says student activity funds for 9 through 12, it's July through September. There is a fix for that in the, in the near future. Right now, InTouch, if you look on, and there's something else we're going to have to do, but we ran out of room. If we're, if we actually put page numbers on here for your reference, it's this, this page right here. You'll notice a filter up here at the, down at the bottom center of the page, near the binding. That is an inactive field, so we can't actually pinpoint it down to the day, week, or month, it just is, it's just as of the date we run the report. So from the beginning of the fiscal year to date, that's what you get. InTouch is actually working on a fix for that, to activate that field, so that we can drill down to the exact day if we need to. So hopefully, that'll be fixed by, by the next board meeting. But it's, we're getting there. We've seen a lot of improvements on the vision side of things. There's definitely still some learning curve, as with everything, but a lot of positives. We're going in the right direction with it. The system talks on so many different levels, where you can input it one time instead of multiple times. So that's going to greatly reduce input error in the future, so. That was my only, my only moment when I looked at this and laid out like this in the, in the packet. I wasn't too thrilled, but we'll keep working on it with your permission.
Past, past that, how do you like the new system?
Visions? I, we, we, I love it. I think it's a good thing. I did have, and I'll, I'll share this without mentioning names, but I had, I had an individual come into my office about two weeks ago, and my office is the second office back from the hall, and I heard this person come in through the first door, and I could hear a piece of paper, you know, just kind of, just kind of flapping in the wind and the breeze, and this person is saying, "I love it, I love it." So finally, a person comes through my door, and this person was not a big fan at first, but it's, it's neat to see people come around and accept change, know that it's not very comfortable, but see that there's definitely benefits. Is it a perfect system? No, but I think it, it has a lot of possibility, a lot of potential and promise. We're excited.
Good policy. I'm happy to hear that.
Informational items, we do have a couple of director's reports. I do know there's an EBT meeting this week. I don't know if Mr. Rooney is going to have an update at the, at the board meeting next week.
I'll try to have one. I'll try to have one, depends on the length of the meeting.
Well, our packet was 225 pages. Oh, my gosh. It's, it'll be short and sweet.
Were you in a busy week?
Yeah, your standard.
Two packets.
And only because I don't know how long it's going to be out, but if you ever pick up the Living magazine, which they have in the different grocery stores, there's a, they did a nice one page on our, it's on the bonds. Very nice. So, did a good job on the, on the article, accurate information.
Where do you pick that up?
I see them at Snitz. They have them in that stand by the front door. There's a lot of places that have them in the stand by the front door, so. I can grab some next time I'm there, if they're still there, but if you get a chance to pick it up, they did a nice job.
Get them there, because everyone's across from me.
Across from KFC, they have, that's where they are printed.
What's that?
Across from KFC, that's where they're printed.
Across from KFC. Okay.
All right. Any other updates or announcements?
State board meeting on Monday.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, well, our next meeting will be in one week from tonight, at 6 o'clock, and we hope to see you there. With that, I will entertain a meeting of a motion for a vote.
Can I make the motion, you adjourn?
Thank you.
Dr. Cole Cohen? Yes. Kathy Clark? Yes. Beth Leary?
Yes.
John Malsden?
Yes, we are adjourned.